We've just reconvened from a closed session and we'll have a report by our attorney, Steve Rudolph, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council's in closed session tonight on conference of legal counsel, existing litigation, claim of David Turnbull, and there's no reportable action. And the second item listed on the agenda, public employee performance evaluation, has not yet occurred, and the council will reconvene at the end of tonight's meeting to take up that matter.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll now call to order the regular city council meeting at 7:02. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. We could all rise for a silent prayer and remain standing for the flag salute, please. Can I ask you to sit at the flag, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14 Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, first item is agenda approval additions and or deletions. Do the council have any? Or just...
One point I wanted to make with the city attorney. On agenda item... Let me get down to it. Under the public hearings, it's Agenda Item 1 and Agenda Item 2, which is the Four Seasons Estates Rezone and the Lonnie Estates Rezone. My wife, her cousin is actually the owner of this corporation, Four Seasons Development. I don't think that it will affect my ability to hear this fairly, but I'll leave it to the discretion of the city attorney.
I mean, the question is whether or not that would potentially result in any kind of an economic benefit to you, and based upon just learning of it now, my recommendation would be that you recuse yourself from the hearing of that matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items from council? None? I have one I'd like to add. It's a presentation, and it's actually for... It's from Cool Truck Show that we had over the weekend and from the Shriners Children's Hospital. We have a gentleman here that's going to present it to some of our... One of our staff person, and I would like to add that under number 3. It's the only item I had. If there's nothing else, we'll have a public comment, please.
Under Government Code Section 5495-4.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and it is a community of character. You're going to see one more tonight being presented, but I came up here for two reasons. One is the stoplight at Carillion in Twin Cities. I haven't seen anything being done, and I know we talked about it last year, and it's put off for a few months because of whatever, and I was wondering if maybe we could speed it up a little bit. There's a lot of traffic going there, and they're still taking a shortcut down Lake Canyon, even though there's some stop signs that were put in there to slow them down. There's still more traffic coming. So I was hoping that maybe we could get this stoplight in as soon as possible because people need it right now on the east side. It's... The shortcut isn't really the best way to go. So tonight I was hoping maybe Mr. Halliday could give me an answer, maybe when it could even be started, because I know we postponed it before. If not, no problem.
I'd be curious to know, too, since I go that route every day. A little bit more information.
I don't recall that we've postponed it before. We've been diligently pursuing the design with Caltrans. We received 95 percent plans from Caltrans. We're ready to go out to bid. Need to get the encroachment permit. We were stalling a little bit in the last probably two weeks anticipating the possibility of getting some additional funding. Once we bid the project, then it's too late to apply for a second round of tier stimulus money, so that has passed without any available money. So probably go to bid in the next two weeks. We'll bid for 30 days, take another probably 30 days toward the contract. At that point, the contractor will order the polls. That'll take 16 weeks, and then we'll start actual construction.
By August, then, approximately.
Approximately, yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. Something to tell them. The second one, and I hope we can get some results like that on the second one, only a little quicker. Everybody that lives on the west side, and maybe some that are on the east side, drive down 4th Street and look at the railroad tracks, and we've got a bunch of ties over there. And some of them are falling. They're just disintegrating, and it's becoming, it looks like, very unsafe. I think you've all seen them. I was going to take pictures, but I figured you all knew what I was talking about. But if a child went over there and they do take the shortcut on the railroad, they got on those ties and they fell, that young person would disappear and you'd wonder where he is, and you'd be looking all over for him. They're rotten. I'm not sure if they'll burn. They might burn, because it's wood, even though they've been treated. It's all along 4th Street. If you look at it, you'll know exactly what I'm saying, and it's been there for a few months now, I think, two or three months. And nothing's been done. No one's hauling them away. Fire season's here. Safety... I was going to go to the safety meeting, but I couldn't make it and say it there. But I'm just hoping that someone will be concerned enough. I mentioned it to the city, and they said it's true. They should be doing something about it. So I'm bringing it up tonight to sort of prod you a little bit, to see if we can get something done before something happens. So I'll be a little proactive. I want to say thank you for whoever it was, Jason or the city manager, Ted Anderson or the council, whatever. But CJ's Automotive is leveled out. It's beautiful. I wish he'd put grass in it so we could putt a little bit or hit a few golf balls on it, but it is nice. It's clean. It's very safe now. And the Oddfellows Building, I guess they're working on it. The fence in the back of it is pushed down, but maybe nothing's going to be happening with kids getting in there. I don't know. I didn't want to walk on it and check it all out. So you did do a job, and it was a week after we talked about it, and I just want to say thank you so very much. And other than that, you guys keep doing what you're doing. It's looking good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Slaughterback, I live in the city of Galt. Three council members voted to disband the wastewater oversight committee. The committee had no power, but was there to question procedures and to recommend alternatives and to come to an understanding and agreement on proposals. Now there is no understanding and no agreement. It's possible I wouldn't be here tonight if the oversight committee hadn't been disbanded. The enhanced drying bed proposals is wrong for this city. There are four reasons why it's wrong. Number one, it's a permanent structure that will cost $2 to $3 million and will be too costly to undo such a mistake. Number two, in the winter months out in the open in the rain, what good are cement slabs used to drying beds? Number three, if and when property develops adjacent to the sewer plant, the biosolids operation will have to be warehoused and will be too costly to warehouse such a structure. Number four, there are less expensive alternatives and less labor intensity, and the other alternatives won't cost the city a quarter of a million dollars for engineering service. West Joe's Engineering has established a lucrative working rapport with the city of Galt. West Joe's suggests upgrades to the city and then is chosen to do the engineering work. Over the years, West Joe's Engineering has amassed millions of dollars over and again in engineering service from the city of Galt. I believe there is a conflict of interest in the city's continual contracting of West Joe's for the city's engineering service. We seem to always find an excuse to contract West Joe's. I have heard a lot about professionals. Professionals. We are professionals. How can you question us? We are professionals. This country was brought to its knees with some of the smartest educated professionals in the country, so don't tell us professionals can't make mistakes. The fact remains, more brass... The fact remains, the more brass involved in the decision-making process, the better manage the organization. It's beyond my comprehension why any manager would think it's all right to let one department head to make the decisions that at times amounts to millions of dollars. But then I've heard it said that Ted Anderson has the final say. But Ted Anderson is not at the interviewing process or at the roundtable discussion when the decision is made. Ted Anderson gets his information after the fact and rubber stamps what's already been I have said before, excessive utility rates does not help developers' bottom line, which is home sales. If you want to build homes, you need to try to manage the city's utility rates, and we're not doing it with some of the procedures that we're following. I read on the internet some of the details of what one of the engineering firm... I mean, engineering people had to put together to convince council on what's best for the city. I've had sales pitches that wasn't as good. That was the best sales pitch I've ever read, the one that this engineer, whoever put this together, is going to present to you tonight. So you need to think about this. This biosolid slab out there over an area like they got planned is not good for the city, and you need to come up with something else than that. And it's expensive, and it would be expensive to undo once we find out that we have made a mistake, and we don't need to go with cement slabs for biosolids. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Tracy Gross?
Hi, Tracy Gross. I live in the city. I have my Stand Down shirt on from last year, and it's time to come and let you guys know about Stand Down again this coming up year. Sacramento Stand Down for the homeless veterans will be held this year, September 17th, 18th, and 19th. We don't have our flyers done yet, but I'll bring you guys some when we do. For those who don't know, the Stand Down for homeless veterans, it's considered a hand-up, not a hand-out. The goal is to help the veterans get off the streets. The veterans come in for a weekend and stay at Camp Pollock in Sacramento. They're fed. They get a chance to take a shower, receive help with medical and dental problems, help with eyeglasses. If needed, they have a chance to get into drug and alcohol rehab and clear up court issues. During the weekend, they can go through a section of used clothes and get a comfort kit that's full of shampoo and soap and other necessities to take with them. The Stand Down also provides military issue, which the veterans really desire. That's what they really want. And the funding also provides new tennis shoes, socks, and other necessities. Like everything else, the funding is limited, and we go ask our communities to give us help with the gaps. And Galt's been incredible. My sister and I have been involved in this for about seven years. Andrew's dad was involved in it for about, I don't know, 14 years before that, so it's real dear to all of us. If you guys remember, last year a little girl volunteered as a scout and got all the shampoo we needed. So this year I'm asking any girl scout or boy scout groups that are interested in helping to get ahold of me, and I'll let them know the list of what we still need to get. I'm also looking for used clothes for the men. We'll take any size clothes, and we're especially looking for larger size clothes. Our police chief and our parks and rec director have both volunteered to let me put a container in their facilities to collect clothes. I don't have the containers yet, but I'll get those soon and let you guys know probably at the next meeting. This being our seventh year at Stand Down, it's amazing to see the patriotism that's still there with these men that have been through a lot, and most of them are Vietnam veterans that are the homeless ones. We're outside. I mean, this is a park setting, Camp Pollock, the Boy Scout camp. So we're outside, and there's at least 400 veterans, and the volunteers at any one time are usually at least 100. And when it's time to raise or lower the American flag, you could hear a pin drop. It's so quiet. When you first start, I remember the first year giving out a pair of new tennis shoes, and this veteran was extremely dirty and kind of raggedy and wanted to come up and give me a hug to thank me, and, you know, you're kind of hesitant that first year. But after you've given yourself a chance to listen to the stories of these men, one turned 18 in Vietnam. They considered themselves homeless when they were in Vietnam because they were there without food and water and supplies at some times and rarely had shelter. They come home without half of their troops. So you get to a point where you welcome that hug, you know, you want to thank them for what they've done. So this morning, it was really painful for me to read the newspaper article on the front page with Galt that talked about... Made it sound like we're debating an issue of how to spend your leftover travel funds. I think it was a very caring gesture by Andrew to suggest that you guys spend some of the money on postage for our deployed military. It is a tough time for families to be able to afford to do everything for our guys. What's sad is that now it's like it's a little political circus again. The comments in the newspaper this morning were shameful, and they were full of me and my comments. It hurts me to be in Galt and to have us portrayed that way. I think that if we have a chance to help our military in any way, shape, and form, that it is a part of our own economic development. And, you know, you guys, if you guys don't have to spend this money, if it doesn't disappear at the end of the year, why do you have to spend it? Why does it have to go for anything? Keep it. Put it away. I'm sure there's a bill you could pay with it. I've already gone to my neighbor who has a son that's over in Iraq right now and told her I'd be more than willing to help send a package, and I think there's a lot of people in Galt that would help. We appreciate the gesture, but I know that Galt will step up and help. And I think you guys need to be careful in the way you portray us in the newspaper, especially when you're involving our veterans, because it was hard, I think, for a lot of us to read that article this morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cherie Heeb. I live in the city. My son is her neighbor. I'm her neighbor. I got a phone call from him just like a half an hour before I came. I sent him four boxes, and it's not the money for me. It's the... I love my son. I'm going to do whatever, but there are families out there that do need help. I don't, but there are other families out there that do need the help. Watching my son leave for the second time to go to Iraq, watching him get on a bus, knowing I'm not going to see him for 18 months, killed me. To send a box with, you know, things from home, Spawns Cookies, things like that, it's the best thing in your whole entire life. It really is. You know, don't you, Andrew?
Yeah, I do.
It is, and if we can all help, it would be great. I don't have much more to say. Of course, I'm nervous, but, you know, we've got to support our troops, you know? Even putting their names in the paper, you know? I've not seen my son's name in that paper ever, and he's been overseas three times now. Been to Korea, and then he's been to Iraq twice now. There's not been one thing saying, hey, these are our kids over there. Here's their addresses. Send them a letter. Send them, you know, hey, we're proud of you. Be great. Thanks, guys.
Next item is the information consent calendar. Would you read those off?
I just have to sneeze. Okay. Number one, the minutes of the... Approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of May 19th, 2009. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, the Old Town Craft Fair and Open House, a street closure request. Number four, the wastewater treatment plant biosolids design. Number five, the wastewater treatment plant anti-degradation task order. And number six, the Galt youth baseball street closure request.
We'll approve.
The vote has been made in secondary. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Next item is the presentations.
Okay, number one, presentation to Sean Farrell by the Galt Community of Character Coalition.
Hello, I'm Mary Martinez with the nominating committee from the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and our coalition promotes six character traits that were selected by our community in 2007. And every other month, the character trait we focus on changes, and we look for individuals who exemplify that character trait to tell their story as the everyday heroes among us who set the example for others. Presently, for May and June, we're focusing on the character trait of respect, and there will be a nomination form in tomorrow's Galt Herald with a June 10th deadline to submit nominations for the character trait of respect. But tonight, we're following up on an award for the March-April character trait of honesty. One of our awardees for that award was not able to receive it at an April board meeting of the Galt Elementary District, so we've asked to use your time tonight to present this award to Sean Farrell. I'd like to read this, why Sean was nominated and selected. "I believe that Sean Farrell is an example of one who represents trustworthiness and truthfulness, all components of the character trait honesty. I know Sean as our city treasurer. During this error, there is a real concern about bankers and others that are charged with looking out for the best interest of those who trust their money to institutions and people. It is important to have Sean as our city treasurer. There is no question that his honesty keeps him on the right track to fulfill his responsibility to the people of this community. He is always honest in his reporting regardless of the situation, when it might be tempting to be not completely and totally truthful. It is important that citizens can feel trust for those we have put in positions to protect the community. Sean as city treasurer has always been a model that our youth and our citizens can look to as trustworthy and honest. As a private citizen, I know that Sean expresses himself honestly regardless of how others might react to his beliefs. Sean is someone I am happy to nominate to represent the character trait honesty. Congratulations, Sean, and you were nominated by Barbara Payne."
Okay, I just wanted to say a few words. I just wanted to say thank you very much, first, for nominating me, just for this great honor. Barbara, I appreciate the time that you spent in writing this. It's very heartfelt, and I truly do appreciate that. And as, ladies and gentlemen, as your, you know, city treasurer, I always try to do the best effort I can, and I always, you know, stress the safety, liquidity, and the yield thing, and I truly live by that. And something my parents have always told me was, you know, always be upfront and very straight with people, and they'll, you know, they'll... Even though they don't necessarily like what you always are going to tell them, they'll certainly respect you, and at least you're, you know, being upfront with them and honest. Now, as Mary said, this is... I was not here for the time of the elementary board meeting when I believe 10 others in the community were also given this same distinction, and I was... Happened to be at a treasurer's conference, but I greatly... Again, I certainly appreciate this recognition, and I will certainly value it greatly. Thank you very much.
Next item, Galt High School Alumni Association sponsoring the Bob Biederman Scholarship, presented by the Biederman family and Mr. Bonar.
Thank you, Barbara, for getting us on the agenda. In lieu of that, due to the holidays and whatnot, if I couldn't have got ahold of Barbara, I was offered the public presentation spot at five minutes. Now, although I'm going to try to proceed very quickly through it, I might have been a little bit hampered with that five-minute limit. But anyway, thank you, Mayor Shelton, Vice Mayor Payne, Councilman Claire, Haynes and Meredith. That was in alphabetical order, showing no preference. But thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to make this presentation at your council meeting. We were all friends and longtime supporters of Bob Biederman, and I'm here tonight with his wife, Louise Kesser Biederman, and the friend of the family, Pam, who Bob considered a little sister. And of course, I was his big guardian. But anyway, I'm Carl Bonar, and I'm representing the Galt High School Alumni Association. And most importantly, we're all here tonight to join in with the Biederman family to honor the memory and legacy of Bob Robert Biederman. The family, due to scheduling, work schedules, vacation schedules, and the late confirmation on my part, weren't able to be here, but they were very happy to hear that Galt has an uptown website, which is going to be very accessible for them to view this presentation at a later date as well as make a recording of it. And I feel it's most fitting that this presentation be made at the city council chambers, as Bob was dedicated to 32 years working as a councilman and mayor, and that was part of his community service legacy that was, for him, a lifetime commitment. After relocating from Rupert, Idaho to Galt approximately early 1938, he attended Galt High School and graduated in 1941. Served in the Army Air Corps from '42 to '46, met his wife-to-be Edna, returned to Galt, married, started a family, and became a 36-year career administrator or supervisor at General Mills in Lodi. All of this by the time he was 25. Not bad for an upearly mobile young man from Idaho. And as I found out more about his history in Idaho, me being from Idaho kind of gave us a report, personal report. We're kind of joked about it as being from the poverty belt of Idaho, and, believe me, I've been through Rupert, and it kind of... It's a tough place to make a living and live in the 30s. A good track... Excuse me, that was his track record. Following that, of course, there were 60 more years of community service to follow here in Galt. The legacy of service to Galt, so worthy of this memorial scholarship that we're presenting here tonight for the first time. Bob was... Bob was always active in his, in his nineteen forty-one class reunion committee, but approaching the nineteen ninety-one reunion, which was his fiftieth year celebration, the association of the high school classmates took, it took a new turn. They wanted to make the celebration, that fiftieth year, a bigger and better event. And so they invited the classes essentially from nineteen thirty-eight to nineteen forty-three to participate with him and have a celebration. That event was such a success that the next year, it was, it was continued to honor the, the next fifty-year class, the nineteen forty-two class. This association of classmates became incorporated as the Galt High School Alumni Association, a nonprofit organization. Eighteen years celebrating since then have taken place each October. And I don't think Bob ever missed one. I know it would have taken confinement to keep him out of the, the celebration. In the last four or five years, Louise was his companion at those celebrations and she was really a very appropriate partner, as we all know how social Bob is and table hopping and running around. She, she was content to enjoy, watch him enjoy himself and she met with the other classmates and had a great time, too. And we really appreciated her and him being there together. In, in creating the, the association, Bob was really just about getting the job done. So when another classmate expressed a desire to be the president, Bob just slipped down and became the vice president. But Bob was the ongoing and driving force, of course, with the full support of the founding directors. Bob did all of the work as the vice president, even through presenting the president with his agenda and the information at the meetings. And of course, he had all, he had done all the legwork, so he was really the driving force and, and we all knew what, who was basically doing the work there. Before long, a scholarship was started for Galt High School, then a second scholarship, and then, of course, inflation dictated that we increased the amounts of the money given with the, with the scholarships. And as of late, we were giving two five-hundred-dollar alumni scholarships and they were the product of this October reunion gathering of Galt High graduates, referred to some as the old timers. And it's really, although in the, the organization that stipulated inviting the forty-fifth year until this past, well, until this year, it, it really wasn't inviting that forty-fifth as we had a, a big gathering of, from fifty on. So, and I started in very, very early, fifteen years ago. So, it's, it's simply this one gathering that produces, that produced a thousand dollars to give a scholarship to Galt High School. During, during the time, toward, in the last three years or so, after fifteen years of doing this job, occasionally, we made comments about, you know, we really needed to, to honor the people doing the work here. And Bob, always with a polite and humorous comment, avoided any, any such attempts to honor him for the work that he had done in leading the alumni. The board of directors first thought of business after Bob's passing was to establish a new tradition. And that new tradition was to give a newly named scholarship, which were always generic in the past, to give this new scholarship, the Robert E. Biederman Memorial Scholarship, to be awarded at the original Galt High School campus where Bob attended. And we hope it'll always be used as a high school and we don't wanna have to make decisions of where to give this scholarship in the future. So, don't let him get out of town. This scholarship is be, to be given for the recognition, recognition of community service and scholastic achievement in the amount of one thousand dollars. True to his legacy, community service is the best work of life. The higher value of scholarship was made possible by the personal commitment of friends and supporters of Bob and his legacy to Galt. Tonight's recipient is here with her mother and, due to the commitment of her parents, they had the desire to see their children have the opportunities of education that they did not have. With this effort, they created a young lady with the maturity and dedication to aspire to the highest levels of education. Claudia has learned the value of perseverance and the rewards of hard work. She has attained very good grades and has participated in school clubs, such as the Galt Youth Committee, AVIDA, which is Advanced in Individual Determination. Claudia has also spent quality time with senior citizens, has participated in Thanksgiving basket programs, worked with a diversity day event, things that we, we saw as a very good attribute in Bob, we want to encourage in others. Claudia has been accepted by the University of Pacific and will be majoring in law with international studies and political science minors. Claudia believes that with an open mind and hard work, she can overcome all obstacles and achieve her dreams. Mrs. Ochoa, would you bring Claudia forward to receive this scholarship award?
Mrs. Ochoa? Parents have been very supportive and we feel it's, it's recognition of their, their raising of their daughter. Galt High School Alumni Association proudly presents the Robert E. Biederman Memorial Scholarship to Claudia L. Ochoa for one thousand dollars to further her education in law. Present this second day in June, two thousand nine.
Mr. Mayor, would you come down? Barbara? Thank you very much, and I know I probably exceeded that five minutes, but it was well worth it. And anybody wishing to participate in the alumni scholarship program and/or the Biederman Scholarship can contact me at any time you wish. We're going to try to continue that level of financial award to these students and, and make it, make it work and honor Bob in perpetuity. Thank you very much.
Carl, I wanted to thank Bob's wife, widow, and friend for coming out to honor him. He was special to us, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, Bob Hitchcock? If I could have you come down, please?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and everybody in city council and everybody in the room. I'm Bob Hitchcock with Cherokee Truck Hearts in Stockton, California, and my partner in crime, James Cotta. We've, for, this is our second year in a row, doing our, there you go, doing our Shriner's Truck Show, Cool Truck Show, here in your wonderful city. We would like to present this little beauty to the mayor and the city council for appreciation, for letting us be back here again. Through our efforts this year, we also were able to raise the fourteen hundred and, yeah, fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for your Parks and Rec Scholarship Fund. Hopefully, next year it'll be more. We've never had a city that has been this open and this welcome to having big trucks in their town and disrupting their lifestyle, as most of them think. Glad a lot of people came out to view the trucks this weekend and find out that most of guys are laptop-carrying mobile businessmen, instead of all the heathens that everybody thinks they are. But it's a good crew out there and we really wanna thank the City of Galt for all their help and all the participation. And I know the Shriner's Hospital, they were really happy with the results. They couldn't make it this evening, but on behalf of everybody, cheers to you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to present this to you.
Our other great help, Sam and Sherry.
Why, it's coming up, just a couple of words. I know that I originally accepted, and you called it a plaque, it's more than a plaque, and I know you shared the history that it had, you know, with making it, in appreciation for the, in appreciation to the City of Galt for hosting the two thousand nine Shriner's Hospitals, the Children's Hospital, and the Cool Truck Show. And apparently, last year, you had approximately fifty trucks. This year, you had a hundred, is that?
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, okay. I know the map on here, the shows actually some of the areas where the truckers have come from. And the, the one trucker came from, was it Wisconsin?
We had two gentlemen drove out from Wisconsin just for the show. And here is, I don't know, Washington, the gentleman from Canada couldn't make it this year. The load changes, but next year, it's even gonna be bigger and everybody's already talking about it.
We haven't filled the flea market ground up yet.
There's spaces left, you know, and I hope that, I just took some notes here, that, that this is something that we can all do as council staff, the community, the citizens. I mean, the Shriner's Hospital, they do so much for children. And, you know, going in, they have their trailer there. I would like to, hopefully, we can get the fire department involved. I'll talk to maybe some news media people. But this, the whole and the community, and unfortunately, I think a lot of people in the community thought, you know, lack of a better word, it was a, you know, it was a truck show.
Yep.
But it's more than that. And, you know, I, I, as I shared with you guys, as being a firefighter as a kid, you know, how much you guys had really helped. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can really just step forward. Something that I don't know if people know, but due to the seismic and asbestos and everything else, and these hospitals, they're having to completely upgrade them. They've had to shut some of them down nationwide, and that's unfortunate. And in fact, they did close one in California, but there are some over in, in the Midwest. I just talked to a nurse that works for UC Davis today, and she shared with me, in fact, she didn't realize that you guys were gonna have the show because she's kinda committed to me personally that she's gonna be helping you guys next year.
Good.
So you've, you've got some nurses that are gonna come. And I've talked to a couple of firefighters from some of the surrounding departments that have already said they'll help.
Great.
So you know what? Thank you very much.
Thank you for everyone.
And we really appreciate you giving this, you know, to the city and the mayor, but you know what? I think rightfully so, belongs to this gentleman here.
Well, he has been a heck of a help.
You know what? It's your department, it's your agency, you guys did a great job. A voice doesn't hear, so it's gonna be yours.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Good to see you.
See you next year.
We grew up together out in the country and it just proves you can't always judge people in their early life that they might turn out pretty good, so.
Thanks again, guys.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Okay. Do I have any communications from council or staff? If none, we'll go to scheduled matters.
Number one, Four Seasons Estate Rezone and Architectural Review Project. And just for the record, Councilman Meredith is recusing himself.
Thank you. The item before the city council tonight is, for, for this particular one, Four Seasons, is a consideration of a mitigated negative declaration and a requested rezone. The council has the entire planning commission staff report attached, as well as the mitigated negative deck. I'll provide the brief summary. The planning commission considered the mitigated neg deck, the rezone request, and a tentative map at their April ninth meeting. During the meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion relative to the homes, square footage size, and some of the amenities, particularly the roofing materials. They had conditionally recommended approval of, to the city council of the rezone, as well as the housing elevations, and you do have the elevations attached as well. And they conditionally approved the tentative subdivision map upon successful rezoning of the property, which the city council has to approve. Additionally, they recommended that the applicant appear before the architectural review committee, which they did. The architectural review committee met on April twenty-ninth. That is composed of two council members, Councilmember Haynes, Councilmember Vice Mayor Payne, and Planning Commissioner Ms. Powers. They reviewed the revised square footages for the homes, elevations, and did recommend approval at that time. The smallest home size now is fourteen hundred square feet, next one is fifteen seventy, and the largest of sixteen hundred square feet. The subdivision is a little over five and three-quarters acres and would accommodate twenty-six parcels. The requested rezone was from R one APD to R one CPD. The requested zoning is consistent with the surrounding properties and it is recommended that the council approve as requested and set forth in the staff report. That finishes my report. Most, any questions from council?
Any questions from council?
No, I had all my answers, my questions answered.
Yeah, I had a question, and I don't know, is there a representative proponent here this evening?
Nope, I don't see anybody.
Okay. My, I can guess that, but I'd be curious to hear from the committee, the reasoning on that no homes be smaller than fourteen hundred. And to give you a setting for that, the home I live in right now is smaller than fourteen hundred square feet. Now, that's my choice, but I'm curious as to why we wouldn't allow that.
Well, if I can remember from the discussion that came up in the architectural review committee, one of the members just felt like we didn't need any more smaller homes than, than what we have. She felt very strongly about it. And I think that was the main reason.
There was one fairly vocal individual from an adjacent neighborhood who had recommended larger homes. It should be noted that the adjacent subdivision has homes that are around twelve hundred and fifty square feet, so they certainly would not have been inconsistent with, you know, the neighborhood. The applicant was agreeable to this condition and said so publicly at the meeting. So with that, we proceeded and took it to the architectural review with those recommendations from the commission.
Well, I just, you know, it's not a big deal, I guess, but I would just say, given A, how many people can't afford any house right now? I just am a little astounded that, I won't support the issue, not because I don't want them to get the rezone, and if they're fine with it, then apparently they're fine with it, unless they felt, take this or we don't get anything. But I'll just be candid, that the home I grew up most of my life was nine hundred and twenty-five square feet. And we were excited when my parents decided to give up our one-car garage so my brother could have that as a bedroom and I got the other bedroom. And that was a pretty big deal in our family. As I say, I've lived, quick math, I've lived fifteen years now in a home that's less than fourteen hundred square feet. But that's just a choice, I think. But I just think in today's economy, when literally people would be happy to be able to afford any home, I just think it's an odd gesture on our part to stipulate that no homes can be less than fourteen hundred square feet, so.
And that's just in that project.
No, I understand that. I understand too. But it's about, one of the only projects right now that's coming forward for people to build homes. I just think it's unusual timing, so. But it wasn't a take it or leave it option either. It was, it was discussed, they were comfortable with it, they obviously felt strongly enough that they could, they could sell a home of that size on the lot size. So they were comfortable with it, as long as it wasn't an issue for them, I don't think any of us felt it was an issue after that.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. And sorry, council, normally I do that. I ask you, before you make any comments, that we would do that. We have another one coming up, I'll make sure I do that. Was there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on the project? If there are none, then we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the floor?
I will move that we accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, for the proponent, I'm not opposed to anything you're proposing, I just oppose to not letting you build a smaller one.
One against. And you have Kurt, apparently one more item?
Yes. You'll note in the staff report, as well as in the agenda, that the requested rezoning of Lonnie Estates, which is owned by the same property owner, is for a sixteen-unit subdivision. The mitigated negative deck that you just certified also covered this document, we combined them together, it was a matter of efficiency. The same conditions apply, the applicant plans to build the same homes in this subdivision, as were approved on the item just now, just prior to this one. It's basically the same staff report indicating the same, same changes that were made, same recommendations made by the commission, and the recommendations made by the Architectural Review Committee on April twenty ninth. Unless you have any questions, I don't think there's anything more I can add, other than it is recommended for approval, let's set forth in the agenda.
Before I ask for comments from council, I'll open the public hearing this time. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this project, Lonnie Estates Rezone and Architectural Review Project? None, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or questions?
No comments.
None?
No, no comment.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Again, I'll move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Just to get, I'll be voting the same for the same reason on this item.
All right, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll give, while we're going over a few other items, we'll ask Councilmember Meredith, they'll come back in, please? Maybe he's out monitoring. We guess.
Yep.
And the next item we had was ordinances. City Manager's office.
That's me.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Next item is city website domain name.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is being brought back to you from a continuation, an item brought forth at the May fifth council meeting, council provided direction at that meeting to take a look at whether the city could acquire a different, an alternative domain name for the city's website. The two selected alternatives were galt.org as the first choice, and galt.gov as the second choice. Unfortunately, neither of those options were available for the city. Galt.gov, in particular, they have new rules regulating the use of the .gov extension, and now they require it identify the state where the city is located, so it would be galtca.gov or galt-ca.gov, but galt.gov is not available. The other galt.org option may be available, but at a very high price by the person that currently owns that domain name. And so I brought this back for council's consideration with some domain name options that are still available, if the council wishes to entertain other choices. I have a list here of those that are either, one, readily available now that the city could acquire, those include cityofgalt.us, galt-ca.gov, galtca.gov, galtca.net, galtca.us, galtcity.org, and galt.gov.com. There are other options, however, these are all owned by other individuals and/or corporations, and we may encounter the same difficulty we had with galt.org, but those that the council may wish to pursue are cityofgalt.com, cityofgalt.net, cityofgalt.org, galtcity.com, galt.com, galt.us, and galt.net. If the council's interested in one of those later options, I would ask that the council also select one of the ones that are available, in the event that we can't negotiate or get one of those other ones, that there would be a fallback. The other alternative is just to stick with the same name that we have right now, which is ca-ci.galt.ca.us, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Comments from council?
I would actually like to see us hold off on purchasing any new letterhead or business cards, but I would like to see us purchase the domain name galt.gov.com, so at a future time, if we wanted to transition our website, we'd be able to do it.
Which one?
Galt.gov.com.
And what amount would you be comfortable?
Well, I think it's gonna cost us about twenty dollars a year for the registration.
That one is available, and we can purchase the domain name, even if we don't actually switch over the city's website to that right now, if the council wants that, what you're considering.
That's what I'm suggesting.
So we could purchase it for twenty dollars a year and maintain that as an option for the city, in the event that we wanted to switch over to that in the future, but we wouldn't necessarily actually change the website name, it would still be ci.galt.ca.us.
Which one was it?
Galt.gov.com.
You were asking to provide more than one, though, right?
Yeah, that one, if, what I said was, if the council wanted something on the second list, which those are ones that are owned by somebody else, then I'd suggest that we at least have one on the top list, which we know are currently available, so as long as we have one on the top list, then we should be good, assuming nobody else purchased it today.
I don't have a need for a new name, but I'm not opposed for twenty dollars of locking that one up and see what comes of it. I agree, if Andrew, I wouldn't reprint any business cards or letterhead or anything else, or, I think more and more people find us through Google, just put in city of galt, and they find us no matter what our address is, but like I said, for twenty dollars. Um, okay.
Fine with me.
I'll be okay with that, so we will go ahead and purchase that, but the city, as its main website, will still use the ci.galt.ca.us, in the event that council wants to revisit it, full switch over, we'll have that website locked up, so we can make that change at that time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item, Finance Department selection of firm to perform auditing services for the City of Galt.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, staff is recommending that the City Council authorize staff to enter an agreement with the Firm of Maes and Associates to conduct auditing services for the City of Galt in accordance to the provisions as presented within the RFP. As way of background, on April twenty first, requests for proposals for auditing services were mailed to seven accounting firms. Three firms responded to the RFP and were evaluated by the Audit Committee comprised of the Assistant City Manager, the City Treasurer, and myself. Each firm was required to meet mandatory criteria, and once the firms were determined to have satisfied the mandatory criteria, each firm was evaluated and awarded points based on items such as the comprehensiveness of the work plan, realistic timeframes, technical experience, qualifications of staff assigned to our engagement, similar engagements with other governmental agencies, and finally, costs. Based on the evaluations performed, Maes and Associates received the highest points award and at the lowest proposed cost. The Audit Committee, though, believes that both firms could have performed the services, but again, because Maes and Associates actually received the highest points and issued the lowest cost, we felt it was important for us to submit the Firm of Maes and Associates as a recommendation from the Audit Committee. The costs of the auditing services are not to exceed sixty-two thousand one eighty-eight. The budget currently has sufficient funds for the amount of services, or for the amount for all services requested. It is anticipated that annual inflationary adjustments in the amount of three percent will be incurred. Again, it is the Audit Committee's recommendation that council authorize the staff to enter an agreement with Maes, excuse me, with Maes and Associates this evening. We do have a representative from the Firm, Maes and Associates, we have the engagement partner Catherine Nguyen here this evening, so if council has any questions of her or of staff, and we'd be more than glad to try to address your questions at this time.
Comments from council?
I'll move the item if there's no questions.
I'm sorry, no.
That's all right.
We were gonna ask something, Don.
I'll ask later, I'm good with it, it's fine.
Okay. No questions, is there a motion?
Yep, I move the item.
Okay, motion's been made and...
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
It was also interesting seeing how close the two proposals came in in pricing, so that, that's good.
We'll now adjourn to the Redevelopment Agency, roll call, please.
Board members Payne, here, Claire.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Would we comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
Information consent agenda items, if you could read those, please.
Sure, the first item, approval of the minutes of the meeting of May nineteenth, two thousand nine, the second item, approval of the Redevelopment Agency warrants.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve and seconded, further discussion, comments, none, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Approved. Adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council, City Clerk's report.
Yes, before you tonight is a letter with, for the mayor's signature, in support of Assembly Bill seven fifteen, which authorizes the cities to post adopted ordinances on their official websites, and also to mail notice of passage of the ordinance to anyone who's filing, who has filed a written request, in lieu of publishing the ordinance in the newspaper. This was, it is supported by the League of California Cities, and also strongly supported by the City Clerks Association for the State of California. It relieves the financial burden for the city, some of the ordinances that we publish are very lengthy, some of those ordinances, we actually have the city's attorney write a summary to put in the newspaper, but, and, which is also costly, but it does take away that financial burden of publishing, although we still get the notice out to the citizens and by placing it on our website. So at this time, I ask you for approval to send the letter to the Office of, who are we sending it to, sorry, the Office of Anna Cavallaro, and also the Governor's Office, and a couple other copies. I'd be trying to answer questions.
Yeah, for our city, what kind of cost would this?
Well, let me, our advertising costs are very high, which isn't all ordinances, but I would venture to say three to five thousand a year average, it's slowly going up, it depends on if we have, you know, our code enforcement ordinance, when we, when we did that, that was very lengthy, and even the summary that we published was, you know, it was a, what, two hundred pages, maybe a little bit less, but, so anywhere from three to five thousand dollars a year, we've gone above that.
I have an initial pushback from it, I don't know that, that's where I'll end up, but, I don't know, it just...
And all the ordinances are published in the legal, in the legal section of the newspaper.
Right. So, so they'll still be in the paper, in the legal section?
No, they're in the legal section now.
Right. There'll be nothing at all?
It'll be on our website, obviously on our agendas, and anybody who's spoken on the issue or asks us to send them a copy of the adopted ordinance, we, you know, we have to mail that out to them.
And from, and to the city attorney, or yourself, or staff, is there a less lengthy and costly version that we could do of what we're doing, is it sort of an all or nothing proposition, or?
Well, we do publish summaries, and I'll, I'll let Steve speak to that, not all the time, it depends how lengthy it is, and...
There is an ability for the council, whenever we adopt an ordinance, to authorize the publication of a summary, as opposed to the entire ordinance, and if we're dealing with a multi-page document, we usually try to catch that, so that we can minimize our printing costs.
I think I'd be more comfortable with at least that, with a, for further information call, or, because I just think we're going a little too quickly of an assumption that everybody has the electronic means of doing that, so, it's just my initial, I understand where they're trying to go, I understand why the league and clerks and all support it, I understand that, but just a little uncomfortable taking that other means of communication away, just my feeling, but if we could reduce the cost of doing it, get the basic information out, and say for further information, and we'd be willing to fax them something, or mail them something, or have them stop by and pick something up, I just feel more comfortable with that.
So you, you wouldn't feel comfortable writing a letter of support for the, for the actual legislation?
I think not, you can't really support it unless the author, maybe we could say we support the intention, and would the author or authors be willing to change the language, but I suspect that's more complicated than, so...
Right, and actually, well, the way it's written right now is it's supported by the city, which is why I brought it to the City Council.
Right, yeah.
And just because it is a cost-saving measure, I, you know, I'm compelled to bring it to the City Council.
I understand, for our community, I'd rather we still publish at least some information, therefore it'd seem odd to support this proposal.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think there are still quite a few people out there that aren't comfortable with going to a website on a regular basis to look at things, maybe sometime in the future, it'll be a natural appliance in every home, but I, I don't think I'm ready to support it either.
Counsel?
No, I agree, I'm fine with that.
Wow, you're all in agreeance.
I know.
But thanks, Liz, for bringing it up, I appreciate it.
Just a couple reminders, there will be a special budget study session on June eighth at six o'clock here in the council chambers. On June tenth, there's a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in the council, I'm sorry, that meeting was canceled, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting was canceled. On June eleventh, there's a Planning Commission meeting at six thirty PM in the council chambers, and that will take us to our next meeting, next City Council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Comments by staff?
I just have one, I wanted to mention the fact that we had a disaster preparedness exercise, a week and a half or two weeks ago, the mayor was there, and, and we had participation from all the department heads, we had the fire department there, police department, everybody represented, it went very well, it was an exercise that involved major train derailments in the City of Galt, so something that could definitely occur here, and a good, good exercise, got everybody thinking about that, and appreciate the city manager's support, and the police chiefs, and everybody in the council's support on doing that, we're hoping to do those more frequently, a couple times a year, it had been a while since we've done the last one, so we were a little rusty, but I think it went well.
Yeah, we're mandated to do those, I know that several of staff, and thanks for bringing that up, when I showed up, I did have my coffee cup in my hand, and so most all the staff asked, "Mayor, and you are here," before I said, "I just came by to warm my coffee up," because seriously, in a disaster, you don't want any of us at the EOC, or the comm center, or anything else, actually, we need to be someplace else. As elected officials, sometimes we have a tendency to get in the way, so I warmed my coffee up, you know, said, "Thanks for showing up," and, you know, they, well, they kinda escorted me to the door, I thought that was a hint, you know, to leave, no, you guys did a great job, I got some feedback from some of the staff members, so thank you.
Well, Liz served as our council handler during that exercise, so...
Yeah, I didn't wanna say it was kinda Liz, it was, you know, like, there's the door, mayor.
Yeah, it was beautiful. There were strange council names, though.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments by staff?
No.
None? Okay. We'll move to comments by City Council members, Vice Mayor Payne?
Yeah, let me make a comment before I get to the business I had scheduled. I have a grandson who is in Iraq, and he has received packages from what used to be the DFW Women's Auxiliary, and they were very meaningful to him. Unfortunately, what came across in the article in the newspaper sounded very negative, and I think the point I was trying to make was, the community of Galt has always been very supportive, they're nonprofits, the churches, and I think they would, again, as an alternative to using... our ta, our, our travel money. So let me be very clear, I know the importance of, uh, our soldiers getting packages in Iraq. Uh, my, my grandson has been very appreciative and one of the things he does do is share it with some of the, the soldiers that don't get things, so hopefully that, uh, corrects an impression that I may have given that we shouldn't do that. The point I was trying to make was I feel like this community has always been supportive in the past and they would again if we asked them. That's just my comments regarding, uh, the comment that was made earlier. Uh, the other thing before I get into my item, I wanted to thank Greg Holliday. I had a visit out at the water sewer treatment plant and it's very good to see some of the things that we've been spending a lot of money on, like the grit removal. I could actually see it and sort of get a feel for why we're, we're spending all this money. Plus, I got a really good view of, of why we're doing this, how important it is. And I have to comment that the staff was very helpful and I was very impressed with the appearance. It's the cleanest wastewater sewer treatment plant I've ever seen. So thank you and your staff for your time. Now, to the scheduled item that I had, um, I have been working with Jason on our economic development under Shop Local. Uh, we have tried to partner with the farmer's market. Uh, when I say we, some of the vendors, uh, have come down and brought their pop-ups and put out advertisement as to what they offer to the people of Galt. Uh, so they know what they can find here in our, in our city and that's one of the goals, that is the goal of the Shop Local campaign. Um, my concern is that the farmer's market, for example, looks like it's questionable where, whether or not it will continue. Um, I think last week, we had fewer vendors there. Um, the week before, I think we had approximately thirty-five people from Galt that came out to use the farmer's market. And the people, um, that did come, they really enjoyed it, they thought it was great. And so my concern is that not enough people know that it's there. And I talked to, um, the manager of Spond's and he's planning a, a street fair, June twentieth, I believe. And he was saying, the thing that helped him the most to get people to come last year was signage. And he on his own would make these little cardboard signs and, uh, go around town and stick them in the ground, which I'm not quite sure they're supposed to do that, but it's effective. So I had a, a thought that, uh, part of our economic development, uh, plan is to have more events, uh, to bring people, especially to the old town and downtown part of Galt. So how do we get the word out when we're having something like this? Um, so I have for a long time wished that we had a big sign on the east side of, of Galt that, uh, let those people know some of the things we have going on over here that they might not know if they didn't read the newspaper or didn't come over to the west side for some reason. So I got some information and it's available to the public and every council member, um, I think has a copy of a location that we could put a sign up. It's at the, uh, Community Park, which is at Carrillion and Walnut. It's a, a very popular intersection. Uh, we could put up a marquee type sign, similar to what you see at all the schools. Uh, we could, we could be as, as frugal as we want to and just put up a, a, a sign just like what you see at the schools. It's a marquee sign where you put the letters in. Or we could dress it up. We could, uh, we could put brick around it or we could put rock, whatever we felt like we wanted to do. The price that I got you was just a basic sign, which is like, pretty much like what they have at the elementary school and you have copy with the price, which is about twenty-nine hundred dollars. And that's not installed and that's just your basic sign. I think that, um, I think it would be a good investment. Uh, I think, we used to go to the movies and every time we'd drive by a movie, we'd look at the marquee to see what was, what was showing, whether we were going or not. I think eventually people would do that. I think they would get trained to look at this sign to see, well, what's going on in Galt. Um, I would recommend that for guidelines, that we use what we're, um, the same policies that we're using for our newsletter, which is the connections as to who would be able to, um, or what we would post on the, on the sign. It would be mostly city events, um, probably the festivals. It would be difficult to open it to, to any organizations or nonprofits and churches. Uh, it would, it would, could entail some legal complications. Uh, it would be probably difficult for the staff to keep up with it. As it is now, I've talked to our information officer, which is our city clerk, and she's willing to post the changes on this, uh, community event sign, like either twice a month or set some real, um, policies on how we would do that. So at this time, I would like for our council to, um, uh, consider agendizing this at the next meeting to vote on, to see if we could either use my travel money that I was just gonna throw back into the general fund, but I think this would, would be a good, um, investment in our economic development plan or what other options we might have as far as funding it. But at this time, I would just like to ask the council to, uh, consider it for the next agenda.
Could this be considered in Monday night's meeting as general budget items? Or will it have to be uniquely agendized to consider it?
No, it could be something that would be, that could be added to the budget during the budget hearing.
But I'd suggest that we throw it in the next Monday.
That would be fine and, and like I said, I don't plan to attend any of the conferences this year, so I've got close to three thousand dollars that I was just gonna throw it back into the general fund. But if we could do it this way, it would be fine with me. And I did give, uh, pictures, actually Al Baldwin went and took pictures of the location, uh, which you can see, it's a nice location on the corner of, um, Walnut and Carrillion. It's at the Community Park, um, and it's available for anyone to look at and then there's also available for the public to look at the drawing of what we'd be considering.
I know we talked about this, I'm sorry, were you done Barbara? I'm sorry, we, go ahead.
The only other thing I was gonna mention, and I'm gonna let the mayor, uh, expound on it a little bit, we attended a meeting for mayors and, and, uh, board members with other, uh, vice mayors and mayors in other jurisdictions. And it, there was a lot of good information. Mike Lyons, the C E O. of Lyons Real Estate, gave us some pretty gloomy forecast for the future in, in the housing market. But it was very informative and I'm, I'm, um, sharing that information with the other council members and we'll make it available on our webpage, uh, for the public to look at. Be a good way for them to see some of the things, uh, that we see when we go to these meetings and why we attend them. So that will also be available to the public and I am through now. Done.
So, are we gonna put this on the agenda for Monday? Is it gonna be agendized or are we just saying that we're gonna talk about it on Monday night?
What's the proper procedure? Does it need to be on the agenda for the budget meeting or?
Well, the council's gonna be considering the whole of the budget on next Monday. So if there are any adjustments that the council wants to make to the budget, including adding items such as this and that can be made at that time, or it could be agendized separately as well.
No, I know, we've been talking about this because we were having sessions discussing the economic development. This is one of the ideas that was bouncing around as well as other ideas. I'm just wondering?
Absolutely.
If we're gonna piece all this together? Because this is a, ultimately, this was part of a larger plan. But what you're saying is you'd like to see it get done now.
Because we have these events coming up and because we are not getting very good attendance, uh, and it is, and I'm using our economic, um, survey study as a guideline to follow for...
And you wanna use the rest of your travel money for this? Is that what I understood?
I would be happy to do that, either that or throw it back into the general fund.
I don't know if that's, I know there was an issue when we wanted to use the money for the troops now. Would that, is there any, Steve, I'd have to ask you, is there an issue of it? Is that, uh, an issue of it being able to be used for such items as a, uh, display?
Um, the issue, the issue is whether or not, uh, the money was being used for, uh, public benefit. And this is a scenario where I understand the proposal is that the city would bill the city and them sign, so there's no, no issue on this.
Also, um, what's the limit for requiring an R O P.?
An R F P.
Uh, R F P., I'm sorry, R F P. Request for a proposal.
This, for purchases like this, that is encouraged to get three proposals, to get a competitive proposal on this type of thing. However, I believe this is under the threshold that's required to actually get written quotations.
What is the threshold?
Uh, is it?
Anything over, um, two thousand dollars.
Over two thousand.
Up to ten thousand, but that was actually just recently increased with the, um, purchasing policy change and goes up to twenty thousand dollars.
So it would require, um, because it's, what is it, twenty-nine hundred dollars?
Yeah.
It would require three written quotations, that would, three R F Ps.
Uh, basically, it's just an informal process during that threshold. Basically, the requirement is that you can contact a contractor, someone who does this type of work and solicit a price from them. It's not a formal process. Um, this would actually even fall under, I think, like the direction of a structure, a public works project, which wouldn't even require a formal process. Anything less than twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars doesn't require it because it's for a public works project defined pursuant to the public contracts code. So, um, I believe that this is considered one of those items.
It's a limitation, I can contact a, one contractor, negotiate a price and have them install it according to our purchasing policy.
Um, no, I'm just a little concerned, money being as tight as it is, maybe we wanna do this. Maybe we should get some bids on it. That's all, I'm, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be a better idea to go that route.
And that was fine, I just wanted to give you an idea of what kind of money we would be looking at.
If that's what the council is seeking to do.
Jason, you mentioned that you were working on the Shop Local campaign? What is the Shop Local campaign?
Well, it's something that is actually in our economic development strategy that the council adopted last year to develop, uh, actually, it was something, the council will remember, there were certain paths associated with different economic development activities. Some were suggested to be done by the city, some were suggested to be done by Chamber of Commerce, others were to be done by different business associations, the downtown, the old town, different groups. This was actually one that was, um, targeted to be, to be spearheaded by the Chamber of Commerce, which is a Shop Local campaign. Um, Vice Mayor Payne kind of took the lead, organized a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce about maybe two months ago. Got a bunch of chamber members together and encouraged them to take this up as an item that they would then be the spirit, the, the leaders of developing this campaign. So this isn't something that the city is taking a lead on, this is something the city is working with the chamber to help, um, develop this program and providing some leadership in that, but it really is meant to be a chamber, um, activity, the chamber, uh, function.
And, and I would clarify, or just add to that, that what sort of was the, um, the reason for me pushing on this was when we passed our local preference ordinance, it seemed like a natural for, since the city's setting the example to shop local, to take it the next step, as well as the fact that we had this opportunity with the farmer's market, uh, for example, coming, that, uh, the local vendors would have an opportunity to have kind of a business fair and show what they, uh, so I went to the chamber and other business people as well. It's not limited to the chamber. Um, they are the lead and we're meeting at their office, but there are other business people involved that aren't necessarily in the chamber, but the chamber is the lead on it.
So would the sign be a community event sign, which is what it says in the agenda, or would it be a sign for the Shop Local campaign, which is what it said in the newspaper?
Well, it would be, uh, similar to, um, what we could put in the, in our newsletters, the connections. In other words, it wouldn't be open to everybody. We could advertise if we're having, uh, uh, farmer's market, for example. We could advertise our, our cleanup day, but it would be a city, uh, mostly a city event, uh, be used for that as opposed to open to every, um, church or nonprofit that has an event. This would strictly be, uh, city events for legal reasons. We'd like to share it with everybody, but it would be really difficult.
Jason, who schedules the, uh, the signage out here on C Street? Who determines when event signs are gonna be posted out on our community sign out front?
Um, that's coordinated through the Parks and Rec Department. They have a list. I think people submit their requests to them and they have a schedule of different groups that are signed up for different periods of time. And if they have a lot of requests, then they'll only have their sign up for so many days and, um, it's all handled through the Parks and Rec Department, I don't know.
And they actually have three signs and they, uh, rotate the?
Yes, there's one up on, uh, Twin Cities and Carrillion, I believe, and there's the one right here and then there's one down on, uh, Chabola and Lincoln.
And to be honest, I had talked to Voice about this whole, um, idea and it was gonna be a strain for the Parks and Rec Department to, uh, try to maintain changing the events. And, um, so our information officer was willing to be responsible for that, which makes sense because what goes on there will have to be restricted.
We have somebody from the public like to speak.
Sorry, I'm sure it's on. How large the sign's gonna be? I mean, is it gonna be a sign that if we had an Amber Alert, could they, could they use that as an Amber Alert also?
Have you seen the sign in front of the library where?
I hardly ever.
Okay, do you have any kids in school, elementary?
No, my, my son's twenty-two. I only have one child, he's...
Well, here, let me just...
I, I don't think it's the type of sign that you would see be used for the Amber Alert. It's not something that can be flashed on there. It's something that if you were to do that, you actually manually go out and have to change the sign.
It's not digital.
It is not, yeah, it's not.
No, it's not electrical.
But here we're coming from.
Because I'm thinking if you, if you're gonna get a sign, wouldn't you want a sign that you possibly could do that with? I mean, that, that right there would, if, if the big enough sign that's gonna show your, the public, why wouldn't it show an Amber Alert or something like that?
If that was the type of sign we were...
Those are about twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's the problem we face, it's, it's a cost issue.
Okay.
And even now, even when we're discussing this, this is three thousand dollars. You see how quickly we can blow that price up?
Right.
Uh, but I like your idea and we have discussed that. In fact, we've discussed it for other reasons, for example, when we were talking about the, uh, well, I don't wanna get off on a different subject, but I understand where you're coming from. Unfortunately, it's not that type of sign.
Okay.
It would, I wish we could do that, but we don't have the funds.
Well, I just was wondering, because it's right in the spot, if you're gonna put it right there, I mean, you know, maybe if you did go to the community and make it bigger and make it more that, you know, we were gonna use it for something like that, it would be more, we don't want...
You know, maybe someday on, on Twin Cities, that would be an ideal place for it. I think that's, that would be a, something for the future.
What about fundraising to pay for it? Think that's a possibility?
Well, it could probably be a city-owned and maintained and restricted.
What's the cost for one? Cause I noticed here, I thought it was a, had electrical and was illuminated, but it's crossed out.
Voice was very clear, he didn't want an electric sign there. So, like I discussed it with him, what he felt comfortable to have at the park and this was, this was, uh, acceptable to him.
I think we oughta look into it maybe a little more, I don't know what the difference is. You had me almost when you said it was like the high school, what they had.
No, not the high school, no.
And that's what, well, that's all I caught.
The elementary school.
Right, yeah.
If we are going to continue it, um, I think I'd be more comfortable if we put it on the agenda, the second meeting in June. We can allocate the money at the budget hearing on Monday, but, uh, it could probably be better to put this on as an agenda item, let Voice list some of the, uh, some of the different options we have and explain to us why he doesn't wanna have an electronic sign on that corner.
Yeah, I don't know why he didn't.
Okay, I think that's where you're at, direction then, right?
That's fine, I just wanted to get it on the agenda for consideration.
Okay.
For the second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June. Uh, council member, Claire?
Just a couple of quick items, um, a couple of weeks ago before I traveled, I was on the phone at the last meeting. Um, went to two events, one up in Sacramento, which was titled, "The Future of California." Uh, very well-attended at the convention center, I don't know what their attendance was, but three, four, five, six thousand people, a lot of people. Incorporated a, a trade show, if you will, of a variety of people who are vendors and suppliers and supporters of things from schools to counties to cities and lots of different things. A number of speakers, um, they had breakout groups concentrating again on the state's future. Obviously, the budget was a... Obviously, the budget was a big topic. They had a number of cabinet members from the governor's office there. And I had arranged the meet and got to spend quite a bit of time with Sunny McPeet Wright, who used to be the governor's captain member for transportation and housing. So you can imagine my interest in having some time with her. So we had lunch, went over some things. I wanted to get her perspective on the past and future of, or she thinks those type items going to the state. And then the two of us joined in on a breakout session that concentrated on education, workforce needs, digital education. And there's a group actually out of Folsom that puts this event on. E Republic is their name, and they publish a number of magazines. Some of you might get them. Convergence is one of the main ones, digital education, public CEO. They're probably one of the most prominent in this area. And they do this work all over the United States. This was the final event of its nature that had been held throughout the United States. And as I say, the head of our state's information technology spoke to a number of important people. So it was, congratulations then, was a multi-day event. Got a lot of good information out, a lot of dialogue. And if you folks see a flyer for it next year and have any time, I think you'd find some or most of it very interesting. Following that, I went down to Southern California, not at the city's expense, that topic seems to be in the air lately, at my expense and my employer's. And attended a grand opening of the world's most advanced hothouse-growing, solar power-generated, I mean, you name it, it was phenomenal. You cannot imagine, if anyone's ever been to Disney World, to their exhibit, The Land, where they talk about hydroponic growing and advanced ways of growing food for everybody in the world. This place exceeds that. I have just never seen anything like it. And how I came upon it, I've mentioned before, a gentleman named Steve Ellicott, who works in solar systems. His company put in solar arrays for this thing. But picture acres and acres inside hothouses. They don't actually even grow in the soil. Buildings and the hothouse just sit on the soil. The growing occurs inside in a growing media, is completely climate-controlled. It's green, everything you can imagine. They yield ten times more tomatoes per acre than normal method. So the consumption, if you will, of prime ag land through this method is reduced by one tenth. I can imagine the capital cost to get up and running. But it's just phenomenal. It is just amazing what they can do. And the quality of the fruit, of course, is almost completely free of damage from weather or insects or anything else. And the yield and quality and everything else is just amazing. And these things end up growing, and you grow your own tomatoes. The plant eventually grows twenty-four feet long. And it's trellised and brought up and it's just amazing. It is amazing to see what they can do. And as I say, the, the interesting part was of how much of the energy for this is being generated through these solar panels. And the solar panels are mounted over a retaining pond of the water. A hundred percent of the water is used, recycled, nothing's lost. And Greg, we've mentioned before, I don't know if the day will ever come we can afford it, but by shading their pond, just the same problem we have, you cut down the growth of algae and everything else from the sun hitting the water. And it was just phenomenal. And so AG Calamura, the Secretary of Food and Ag for the state, of course, was there on the governor's behalf, along with a special envoy of the governor. He was a gentleman who came here when we dedicated our Future Farmers Association. And I hope people from our office here can go down and see that, the young students, to see this. But there's nowhere in the world more advanced than that facility. And there's already a second one planned in Santa Maria now because it is, it is so successful. And I, I think California specifically should be very proud to lead. Again, food, we grow something like seventy percent of all the food for everybody. Two percent of the people, farmers, two percent feed the other ninety-eight percent of us. And congratulations to them. So it was, it was amazing.
That's it. Daryl, is that something, you know, the medical marijuana dispensaries might be able to benefit from?
It might be.
Councilmember hands.
Just trying to be helpful. I'd like to talk about a couple of things, actually. I did a ride-along on Friday with one of our officers, a really outstanding gentleman. I don't know if he'd want me to give his name, so I won't do it. But a lot of things kind of come to light. It's not my first time doing a ride-along, it's not the first time I've been in a police car. Well, for...
Would you like to explain that?
You were in the, you were in the front seat.
I was in the front seat this time. But it was very interesting, and I think it's really important that I do this on occasion because I, it really, you know, even though I'm around town on occasion and I, and I see things, but sometimes they're able to point things out to me, and it's very helpful to me. And there's a few things that I picked up on while we were out. And safety is a real big issue for me, and that's one of the things I'm always harping about. One of the things, and I've already sent Jason an email on a couple of the issues. One of them was the Harvey Park, the trees there, the lights. You can't even see the streetlights there because the trees have grown out so much it's blocking a lot of the light. So I've sent an email to Jason, I'm asking that those get cut back. How long do you think it will take before we can get that done, Jason? Parks and Rec will probably do it.
Yeah, I sent an email to Troy this morning. He was going to have the tree removal crew go out there, probably later this week and take care of it.
Okay, that's great. But those are the type of things, you know, when I'm out and I'm riding around and I'm talking to one of the officers, but those things get pointed out to me, and I think it's important. I bring it back and, you know, sometimes, you know, day-to-day, Al didn't catch it. So I know, you know, I mean, not everybody saw it. So, but it was great, and I'm glad to see we can get some of those type of issues. I also contacted, you know, we've talked previously about the town hall meetings as far as foreclosure issues and that go. And Jason, you've been working with me on this. And I, personally, I contacted Dan Lundgren's office. Well, I've got one of his representatives who's going to meet with me. And I also contacted Dave Cox, our state senator, one of his representatives who's going to come down and meet with us. So we're going to be talking and do a little brainstorming. And I'm hoping that within the next month, we're going to be able to set a date. And we want to be able to have a town hall meeting that's going to be able to answer all the tough questions. And that's really important. And it's going to be able to give people the information they need to make the right decisions, especially in these hard times. I do have some other issues that I'd like to talk about, but I think maybe I'm going to bring these up when we discuss our budget on Monday. So, but outside of that, I mean, it's been a good week, the last two weeks. I'm looking forward to Monday's meeting, and that's pretty much it for me today.
Thank you. Andrew, you have some comments?
I do. I wanted to start off first by thanking everyone for coming out to the Memorial Day Ceremony. The mayor and myself spoke during the ceremony. Most of the city council was there. We also have our representative from the CSD, who's also in the audience tonight, who's there. We appreciate his presence. And that leads into the care packages for deployed soldiers. Regardless of whether there are some second thoughts about what we approved at the last meeting, the program will move forward. Families have until the end of this fiscal year, which will be the end of this month, to come into the city clerk's office. And we will pay the postage for you to ship packages overseas to your loved ones that are deployed in defense of this country. We have, I believe, twenty-four hundred dollars left to spend. So whatever's not used will be rolled over into the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. Second item I have on the agenda, it's pretty lengthy. I won't go into great detail because really, if you read at the bottom, I'm just right now asking for staff time to work with the city manager's office and the IT department to bring back a formal proposal, first meeting in July. But the overview is, I'd like us to create a new section of our city website that provides unparalleled transparency to the spending that takes place in this city. I'll give a great example. Canview is a website set up by the state of Kansas that is being touted by a lot of governmental watchdog groups as being the ultimate government transparency site. Now, I'm not suggesting that we go to the links that they do where you can actually type in an expense and it brings it up, detailed information about the vendor. I'm just suggesting that we, we post our expenses as they take place throughout the year. And like I said, I'll bring back a formal proposal, the first meeting in July, if council authorizes me to meet with staff. So is that okay?
It may, I assume by meet with staff that it's...
It'll be more than two hours. It'll be the city manager's office.
And CO.
IT. And we'll get a feeling on if this is a significant amount of money that we're talking about investing or if this is something that we can do relatively easily. Third item I have on the agenda was the early prisoner release fact-finding task force. We've all been hearing a lot about what the governor is proposing to do to balance the state budget. I think all of us sitting up here know that the early prisoner releases could have a very serious impact on our community. So what I'm asking is for our public safety committee and our police department to bring back to council as a quote, "fact-finding task force", any relevant information that could help us make the transition more difficult for these early releases to move into our community, take hold in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Well, maybe you and I and the chief can get together and talk about that in brief.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I could, under Andrew's agendaized item on the gift packages, which as you know, I support, I've got no problem with that. But obviously, we've lately, just tonight, had a variety of items of interest to council members, either individually or collectively. And at one time, the reason we had a discretionary fund was for these things. And I would like council to just contemplate, and we can decide if we want to get into that or not come to the budget meeting and/or any future ones. Because in fact, that's kind of what we're doing right now. We're using travel funds to come discretionary funds for things council members believe in and then asking for support for that. So there appears to be a reasonable interest of council members to do that. And if we're going to, we probably ought to budget for it and figure out how to best do it in the future because obviously it's gathered enough attention to get newspaper articles and then other things. And it doesn't seem to me as a process, the best way to create discretionary funds is the way we're doing it now. I would think we would be better to discuss it as discretionary funds and either decide that there ought to be or not ought to be. And I don't see the budget as intended, that when you don't spend all of it, that you find something else to do with it. Although I support some of the things people are coming up with to do with it. I think the budget ought to be budgets for intended purposes. And I think we ought to be happy when there's money left over. I think it almost automatically ought to go back to the general fund. And then, if we have another priority, regardless of whether it comes from unused travel or unused IT purchases or unused consultant fees or whatever, just consider it as now a new priority that warrants the use of the city's money, period, regardless of where it comes from. Or, let's say that there's going to be discretionary funds. And one of the reasons I happened to believe in them at the time was that, for example, Andrew and I, or I guess everybody supports using funds to help our troops. Suppose we got into a debate whether we should send CDs, sunflower seeds or something else. I personally think each council member ought to have some small amount in a time like this, very small amount, that, just like Andrew wanted to buy that deal for twenty dollars, why would I even want to argue with Andrew about that name for twenty dollars? And the same thing, I have no reason to argue with him for supporting the troops. But I think it'd be easier if Andrew just knew sometime during the year, I can spend fifteen hundred dollars to either support the troops or something else, assuming it's illegal use of funds and everything else, and just let him pick that item. So if I'm not proposing tonight, we debate it, resolve it. I would propose, think about it, and see if in the budget meeting, since that's what the budget's for, if we want to create those or if we want to say, no, we don't want discretionary funds, then I would say then, let's not have discretionary funds.
Well, maybe the best thing to do, Vice Mayor Payne said she wasn't going to travel at all this year. Maybe we just do away with the travel budget and we just call it council discretionary funds. And if council wants to use their discretionary funds to travel, to a conference, to better the city's standing, and they can do it. They want to purchase a sign and put it out of park, they can do it as well.
Yeah, why don't we...
That way we don't have two separate funded line items. It's just one thing.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, we have that as part of the budget discussion because that seems the most appropriate time as a budget item to discuss.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing because I have that written down.
Oh, good.
That, my request was to have the travel funds and the discretionary funds to be put on our council's budget meeting.
I'd have no problem with it, just so we understand.
We need to discuss.
I don't, yeah, I just would never support anything that would increase the spending amount. I would be willing to maybe decrease it, if you want to merge it. But I wouldn't be interested in increasing any spending.
Well, I think once we get it on the agenda, then we bring it back and we can discuss it, I think, more appropriately. But hey, I do have a couple of things. Craig, I'd like to ask you if you can, and you're probably in direct contact, you know, with the railroad company anyway, but, you know, the railroad ties are kind of piling up. But maybe you could make contact with them, or do you already have? And you've got kind of a timeline when those are going to be removed? I don't know if you do now, or...
We currently don't. We can still make a phone call and try to find out.
And you could just email us, or at least email me. Let us know, I appreciate it. And the chief and I held the first Public Safety Advisory Committee, it was last week. And that went, went pretty well, I thought. We had, it was more and more of a introduction. And some things that we needed to do was take care of, you know, appointing a chairperson, co-chair. We didn't have everyone there. So we're going to work on the next meeting to make sure we get all the members there so that we can vote and, you know, choose who's going to be the chair and the co-chair. But, and I like the idea that you had, Andrew, about the prisoner release, the, you know, the fact-finding task force, and it's a great idea. As Andrew said, we were both, and several council members attended, and actually, Andrew and I had the opportunity to speak, you know, to the public and to the veterans and shared a little bit of our story and our life. And it was touching, I think, for both of us. And the other item that I had the opportunity to do was City Tots, they have a graduation. And apparently, they asked the mayor to, you know, hand out their diplomas or whatever every year. And there was like about forty-six kids. And they almost had me off of the stage at one point. I just kind of moved out of their way. They were so excited. And I don't know who did it the last few years, but this is like sixteen years that they've had this little graduation. Daryl, maybe you and Andrew, maybe you guys were there. So I don't have any other comments, other than what we need to do is council now needs to re-adjourn back into closed session because we have an item. I'm sorry? Go ahead.
One item, if I could. Andrew's, Andrew's item on the, with staff on the visibility. Could you also include, as instant as possible, posting the campaign reporting and stuff? That would be great.
That'd be good.
Can I clarify?
Can we do that? It wouldn't be too much of a burden for you?
I like that.
Should be relatively simple, you just scan it on.
Yeah, I would envision something like, yeah, that as the campaign reporting is turned in on the dates required, it would be scanned in the PDF and just posted at the website for people wanting it.
As long as we had a date to get that done.
Yeah, yeah.
One more thing too. Greg, did you get the, the listserv sent out on the railroad noise?
No, I did not. I'll make sure I do it tomorrow.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the discretionary funds coming, come back on June eighth?
I wanted it at the budget.
At the budget, right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So we can discuss travel funds and discretionary funds. And I had some comments, but I'll just wait and do it then. So, okay. We will now re-adjourn back into closed session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.